I want to open this meeting of the Gloucester City Council, January 9, 2024. And we will, first order of business is a flag salute and a moment of silence. Shawn Nolan will do the moment of silence. I have to read, I was just told, I need to read the legal language here. In the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the city council, and according to open meeting law, for the convenience of the public, this meeting is recorded by video and audio, and a Zoom link was posted on the agenda. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. Roll call votes will only be necessary if a specific matter requires one or a member of the council is participating remotely, which is not the case this evening. And then we have the nondiscrimination statement. It is the finding of the city of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. Tonight, we have Counselor Dylan Benson, welcome, Ward Two Counselor.
Good to be here, everyone.
Counselor Valerie Gilman, at-large Counselor. Frank Majota, Ward Four Counselor. Shawn Nolan, Vice President, and Ward Five Counselor. Jason Gro, at-large Counselor. Marjorie Grace, Ward Three Counselor. Jeffrey Worthley, Counselor at Large, and Scott Memart, Ward One Counselor, and myself, Tony Gross, Counselor at Large. And now we will have a flag salute and a moment of silence. Shawn Nolan will lead us in the moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, divisible with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's moment of silence, I'd like to give in honor of Joe Nogala, a wonderful man to the city and to all humanity. I met Joe through his daughters growing up in Magnolia, being very active in the community. I got to, at that point, meet his wife, who is tremendous in the arts, and their daughters. Their blessings to the city still continue on this day with Lisa working with the tennis courts at the Gloucester High School. This family relocated to Gloucester after certain years around doing different things. Gloucester is much better off today than it was before Joe Nogalo, because of Joe Nogalo. And before that, I'd like to ask if there's any other councils that would like to add to that.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The next order of business is oral communications.
At oral communications, the public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communication shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of same. A copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Person speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each.
Hello, is this one? Hi, my name is Sultanat Bertikova. I'm a homeowner at 33 Middle Street and a director of borough to the proposed 20 Main Street multifamily housing project. My husband, myself, neighbors, and other concerned residents of Gloucester have already spoken about the problems that 20 Main Street project poses to the boroughs and entire downtown neighborhood at numerous city council meetings last year. For starters, nobody at the zoning board of appeals and the historic district commission notified me or my husband last year when they were approving the 20 Main Street development nearly eight inches away from the retaining wall that holds up our property. We accidentally learned about the proposed development from our neighbor at the end of July 2023. We submitted a petition with nearly 200 signatures of Gloucester residents and voters to stop the 20 Main Street development to the city council, Mayor Verga, and the planning board in August 2023. As part of our petition signature collection, we found out that people on Main Street, a lot of the residents and businesses, and Middle Street and broader Gloucester did not know about the proposed project either. We are deeply frustrated that such a building, big building, major development, being approved without sufficient public engagement and participation, least of all the boroughs that are entitled to be making their voices heard. This proposed development will come on the city council's agenda soon. This council will hear from numerous residents who have concerns and objections to the 20 Main Street development as it is proposed. Some of our concerns as director of boroughs are as follows. The foundation and structural integrity of our house and the retaining wall is hugely concerning, given the construction activity that will take place eight inches away from the retaining wall and our property. By building so close to the retaining wall, there will be little, no ability to repair the wall in the future, which is inevitable. Increased fire hazard from 20 Main Street due to its extreme proximity to our house and decreased ability of the fire department to respond to a fire emergency is also a big concern. Other sources of concern are devaluation of our property, complete loss of sunlight on our southern side of our house. The development will completely cover all the way to the third floor of our house, so we will basically be facing a dark wall from the Main Street side. Loss of privacy due to extreme proximity of 20 Main Street to our house, the windows will be staring into our windows. The concerns of the neighborhood include loss of neighborhood character and historical appearance and aesthetics, given the 20 Main Street buildings' incongruity with the rest of the buildings on Main Street. The building as proposed is ugly and massive and dense, too dense relative to other buildings in the neighborhood. Strain in the infrastructure, including sewage, water, parking, and worsened traffic around us, and increased pollution and noise from 20 Main Street is a concern, as well as degradation of environment due to pollution and noise from the construction. Please kindly consider these concerns as this project comes on the city council's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, and I got my timer, just in case I'm off. So I'm Judy Steiner, 29 Addison Street, apartment 2R, and I'm here to talk about infrastructure, supporting infrastructure. We keep talking about a parking assessment, but we never see it. So I found it, October 22. And a lot of things have happened since then. I have searched all the minutes for all the meetings since that time. No mention of a parking study, which is frustrating. Now, parking, of course, is being an issue with the 20 Main Street, I'm going to throw that in there, and then I'll move on. The parking and the traffic, we need a traffic assessment, we need to be proactive, not reactive. We can't build something and go, oh, we should have done it this way, or why didn't we think of that? So the unit, the building is going to have 24 parking spots underneath, I believe, or one for each unit? Well, ideally, there's going to be more than one occupant, and each occupant is going to have a car. So we're adding more traffic to a one-way street that people, residents included, cannot find parking on. And it dumps into this lovely mess of an intersection with six streets coming into it. Roger Street, Main Street, Washington Street, Angle Street, Western Ave., and Commercial Street are all in that traffic pattern, which there's really no guidance of how to drive around it. So that's going to be a problem for all the streets, not just Main Street, but at least especially a problem for Main Street. The parking, parking has changed. We're counting places twice, I think, when I look at stuff, but we've added the cut. Love that venue. 400 capacity for parties and so forth. Where are they going to go? Roger Street is already packed, they can't even park their employees there. And the library, which badly needs an expansion, we've lost that lot. That's a lot of cars, too. Stacy Boulevard, everything is already congested. And so we are losing the parking on there. St. Peter's Square is also filled to capacity. And, give me one second. Emergency response, which is wicked important, because where are drivers going to pull aside for an emergency response on a one-way street with parking on both sides? And they always show up with more than one vehicle. I mean, you've got a fire truck, you have an ambulance, you have three police cars, and maybe even a second fire truck. Where do they go?
10 seconds.
Guess you started before. Go ahead, finish your thought.
Sorry, you know, and I have my hearing aids in, so it was like really loud. I got through most.
Thank you very much. City Clerk will take. Well, it can still be submitted. And I see that Counselor Worthley is actually a timekeeper this evening. Thank you.
We're all friends.
Joni Aldridge, 16 Bellevue Avenue. I really wanted to thank all of you for your unanimous vote in saving the 291 acres that are a part of the Long Hill Conservation Project. It gives me hope, which I really am grateful for, too. I hope that with all the planned development that lies ahead, that we look beyond each parcel of land solely as an opportunity for development and profit, and see them as precious parts of our community. Parcels of land don't exist in a vacuum. May we ask how developing them will affect the neighboring properties and the city as a whole? I would like to share my support and concern for the residents of Middle Street and what effect the 20 Main Street project will have on their homes. I'm certain the city is grateful for their decision to invest in a home here and certainly grateful for the tax revenue. In return, have we considered the impact the project will have on their investment and their safety? Also, will this project add to the charm of Middle Street and Main Street, or will its physical appearance reflect the lack of an awareness and respect for its surroundings? Respect is the key issue, I believe. May I ask that we all respect not only developers, but the community and neighbors of each parcel of land? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Beverly Palmaci from 8 Commonwealth Avenue. According to Thomas Jefferson, "The purpose of government was not to serve the rulers, it was to serve the people and uphold their rights." From the Code of Hammurabi, going back to 1772 B.C., it stated that "the first duty of government is to protect the powerless from the powerful." The code of conduct for the city council, which you are all familiar with, because I guess you've recently sworn oath, it's based upon the principles of selflessness, integrity, objectivity, openness, honesty, and leadership. Now, I assume this code also applies to the different boards and commissions of the city. One of the boards is a zoning board of appeals, which collectively ensures the fair application of zoning laws while balancing the interests of property owners and the broader community. Clearly, the 200 people who signed Ms. Bertikova's petition against this project feel strongly about it and would object to it being built, excuse me, behind their homes. I would like to ask each of you on the council, who obviously reside in Gloucester, how you would feel about the construction of a building of this size and magnitude within inches of a retaining wall behind your homes? Now, Ms. Bertikova has also already stated all the details and how it will impact her home. So I'd like you all to give this serious consideration, because it will have a lasting impact far beyond our lives. That building, once it's up, is going to be up there for a very long time. Thank you.
Do we have anyone, any hands raised, Madam Clerk?
I don't see any attendees raising their hands to speak.
And then we will move on to the next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is the consent agenda.
Would anyone like to remove any items from the consent agenda? Anyone like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously.
Is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee report of January 4?
And I will turn the mic over to Counselor Memart, Chairman of the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, Standing Committee.
Thank you very much, Counselor Gross. We had our meeting at the Harbor Masters office last Thursday night. Most of our meeting was taken up with community preservation proposals. We did the last six, total of 12, that'll be before us at a public hearing, once our free cash has been certified by the city's budget process, the auditor. So the items for your consideration tonight, there are just three, and it's all money that was coming in and donated, so it's all good stuff. The first, Budget and Finance, item number one, is memorandum from our Veteran Services Director requesting acceptance of donations in the amount of $500, and on a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. Recommend that the city council accept various cash donations under Mass General Law 4453A to support veteran services in the amount of $500 from the following members within our community, and they are Ed Camo and Sal Josephine Testaverde, for a total of $500. And I so move.
Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it unanimously.
Number two from Budget and Finance is a memorandum from our Archives Committee Co-Chairs requesting our acceptance of donations in the amount of $500. And on a motion by myself, Counselor Memart, seconded by Counselor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council accept under Mass General Law 4453A a cash donation from the Cape Anne chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution in the amount of $500 for the Archives Department for the purpose of funding Archives Committee Donation Fund, Fund Number 3305, and I so move.
Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero.
And our third donation acceptance relates to a memorandum from our Elder Services Director, Elise Sinagra, requesting our acceptance of donations in the amount of $2,232.30. And on the committee recommendation, on a motion by myself, Counselor Memart, seconded by Counselor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept various cash donations under Mass General Law 4453A to support the council on aging in the amount of $2,232.30 from the following members and business partners within our community, and they are Bank Gloucester, Best of Times Travel, Margaret Gasperoni, Mary Palazzola, KPN Savings Bank, Jerry Favoloro, Mary Benham, Donald Petit, Marilyn Grant, Peter and Kimberly McLeod, Richard Semple, and William Colby, for a total of $2,232.30, and I so move.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Counsel President, when I looked for the attendees for oral communications, I didn't see any hands up, but now someone is saying she had her hand up. So I don't know if you want to suspend the rules or take her at the end of the meeting.
It's going to be a pretty quick meeting, so I think we could, we'll take it at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Next order of business is the Planning and Development Standing Committee report of
Oh, yes. I'll hand the microphone over to Planning and Development.
Sorry, you've got a lot more talking to do this semester. We had a meeting on January 3, 2024, and we had a one item agenda. It was a memorandum from general counsel regarding a grant of easement to National Grid for Main Street 195, and that is an electrical grid, electrical easement for National Grid to complete their works for the ongoing work that's being done at the police station and the courthouse. So it's a pretty straightforward easement. It's all underground and is all part of the general construction that is going to be taken. So on a motion of Counselor Gross, seconded by Counselor Gilman, Planning and Development voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council grant and authorize the mayor to execute an electric distribution construction easement to Massachusetts Electric Company at 195 Main Street, as requested and described in the easement documents attached to the general council's December 8, 2023 memorandum, and I so move.
Second.
Discussion, Counselor Gross, since you made the motion, is there anything you'd like to lead with?
Nothing more, other than the fact that it's pretty straightforward. They need to do this easement in order to finish the construction and add in the electricity.
Counselor Memart.
It's not directly germane, but in honor of our former councilwoman, Counselor O'Neill, if we're granting easements, it would be nice if National Grid took care of their property on Roger Street, which is a disgrace with overgrown vegetation behind the fences. It's our main thoroughfare, and it's not had any landscaping or attention. It's not related directly, but we have some leverage about requesting their, taking care of their property for the public good.
Any further discussion on this matter?
Yeah, I had a question. I would really would like to know just with this project, how long National Grid will be doing the work there? That's just my question, and what type of disruption we'll be seeing. I don't know if there's ability to speak to National Grid on that, but that would be my question to them.
What are you looking at me for? Oh, okay. I mean, to answer the council's question, according to Suzanne Egan, who was there the night speaking on it, this is all part and parcel of the actual construction projects that's moving forward. It's not an addition or special to what they're doing. She didn't have an answer as to when they would be doing the work or how long would it take, but it's part of the general construction project that's going down there right now behind the fences. So I don't know the answer to that, and we could probably get it, but my guess is we probably shouldn't delay the vote in order to get that answer.
No, no, and that's not what I'd be looking to do. So I just wanted to see how long the project will be going on for.
I guess that's a question for the Building Committee, maybe, of the police station. Do you have any answers, Ms. Cahill?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, so we actually, they just met today, the Building Committee, so if you want us to get a total update on that project, the recording will be available. They expect that this electrical work, kind of the groundwork, should be done in the next few months. They will be done with the whole police section, which are the basement and the first floor, and make the move, move the police back down. They're looking for a May-June timeline to make that move, and then they'll be moving into the courthouse part, and they'll wrap that up through the summer. So, but there's a full update provided by the contractors today that can be seen on the Building Committee, and all the Building Committee's meetings are available online.
Thank you. Does that help?
That's very helpful. Thank you, Ms. Cahill, and that's helpful to constituents and folks that were curious about it, so they can look at that. Thank you so much.
Any other discussion on this matter? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero. Next item on the agenda, next order of business, Madam Clerk. I'll get it right at some point.
The first scheduled public hearing, Public Hearing 2023-051, amend Gloucester Code of Orangees, Chapter 21, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, Article 1 in general, Section 21-1, prerequisites to Acceptance of Private Ways, by deleting current Section 21-1 and adding a new section, 21-1, Acceptance of Private Ways.
And that is to be continued, so we need to open it this evening?
Yes.
And then continue it. So I'll open the public hearing, and it will be continued to February 13, 2024.
Next public hearing is Public Hearing 2023-54, amend Gloucester Code of Orangees, Section 21, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, by adding a new Article 5 entitled "Petition for Alteration of Private Way."
I will open the public hearing, and it will be continued till February 13, 2024. And next item of business would be the continued oral communications.
Hi, this is Catherine Ryan, 17 Hyrock Terrace. Thank you for letting me speak. Tonight, I wanted to talk regarding the comprehensive plan and public outreach and participation. I want to go back to the kickoff at City Hall and just note for the record that the mayor was not in attendance. There were very few attendees that were not appointed members to stakeholder committees. J.M. Goldson, who's the consultant firm, gave instructions that rules for feedback at the kickoff had to be presented as a question, not as a statement. She said at that kickoff that her firm was not responsible for the public feedback, that they were located in Boston, and that it was up to us, the public and the community, to partake in the community development and the city's outreach, and a meeting in a box would be coming. She said Phase 2 public feedback meeting in a box would be available come October, and as we know, it was not. At city committee meetings that I went to and listened to in October, November, and December, Weather Affordable Housing Trust, Committee for the Arts, Planning Board Committee, Community Preservation Committee, City Council, et cetera, members discussed limited feedback, how to encourage feedback, data that was missing from the meeting in the box. Individuals on these boards said that they had led some meetings in a box and that the mayor or the office of the mayor, I can't remember, had sent an encouraging reminder to boards and committee members to participate in the comprehensive plan and other, you know, other meetings and outreach. At one Committee for the Arts meeting, the Community Development Director and another member from Community Development were at the table, were asked about the master plan and how the committee would intersect with the comprehensive plan, and that this committee didn't have capacity for public outreach. The committee... The Community Development Director said that their department doesn't have capacity for public outreach. And as a reminder, as I stated above, the consultant at the kickoff said that they weren't in charge of the public outreach. At the Committee for the Arts, he also said to encourage everyone to fill out the survey, I know that there has been more meetings in a box after the MAPC Boston Globe Spotlight Series on housing and on the, the public transportation issues in Massachusetts. I know the committee members have participated, which is important, but I have a question about that because I'm pretty sure that many of them were already involved in Phase One for months because they were part of the inside stakeholder meetings that were described as being Phase One, internal meetings. And in 2022, the Affordable Housing Trust worked with Jen Goldson on a prior consultancy delve. So I know the public feedback was already extended two weeks, and I'm thinking that we should at least have as much public outreach as you had for Phase One, and that I think there are still issues. You know, I noticed that the public map where people could put feedback in pins was already punked, quote unquote, you know, with tons of little symbols that says, let's develop dogtown all over the place. I just, the outreach can be broader and more, more public and less, less conflicts of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else on oral communications that we missed earlier? Next order of business would be councilors' request to the mayor, is that correct?
Yes.
And we go about this by roll call? So Counselor Worthley, you are first up.
Thank you, President Gross. I want to thank the mayor for a spectacular inauguration event. I think we all appreciated, and the community appreciated, the outreach and the spirit of cooperation in the poems and the music, and all that was really fantastic. I got a request from a constituent who lives on Eastern Ave., asking for trucks to follow the truck route so that they don't go down Eastern Ave. towards Main Street, but continue down the extension towards Main Street. We have two wind turbines that are functioning right now, both of which the city benefits financially from, but they weren't running today. And I wonder who even knows how they operate or when they operate or why they operate. I just want to put that out there. I put a request in regarding why school lights are on at night. I know that that's been sent to the mayor's office, we haven't received anything back yet. And lastly, I want to thank the DPW for doing a good job. This was a tricky storm where it was snowy, icy, rainy, snowy, icy, rainy again, and on a Sunday, so it's hard work done and well, job well done. Last thing I'd like to say is not necessarily request to the mayor, but a request to the council, just to say, to welcome everybody back, especially the two new representatives, Council Benson, Council Grace. Every one of us belongs here. I think we should all feel like we belong here. Election's over, and we've got a lot of work to do. We will disagree, that's one thing I can guarantee, and I think how we disagree with one another will increase the odds of us agreeing and working together on other opportunities. So I just want to establish my commitment to always being positive and looking for the bright side for everybody. Thank you, and welcome.
Counselor Benson?
I don't, I don't have anything.
Counselor Gilman?
I just wanted to have a shout out for Joanne Sinos for a phenomenal job, once again organizing the city clerk's role at inauguration, standout job, and you're the best.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
Counselor Grace?
I just, I wanted to say I'm excited to be here, excited for the next couple of years, looking forward to working with you all and developing a wonderful rapport and getting some, some good stuff done. And just wanted to, a special shout out and a thank you for the inauguration. It was a very special moment, getting sworn in, but also because I had the privilege of listening to my daughter and her original song, and she's an extraordinary musician as are the two musicians, Corey and Josh, that played with her, so thanks.
Counselor Grow?
Yeah, just a couple things. First, I do know my left from my right most times, just want to make that clear. Secondly, as Counselor Worthley has mentioned, there's going to be a lot of work this year, and P&amp;D is going to have a fair bit of that with the MBT, TOD overlay discussions and the community planning initiative. We are very eager, I'm very eager, I think P&amp;D is very eager, and the council is eager, to have community input on a regular basis and to be involved in those processes. We had numerous meetings during the zoning amendment of 2021. We worked really hard on that. We've got a lot of community input on that. I think we're going to work as hard to get the input on these issues coming down the pike. So, you know, please reach out, let us know, be participative, if that's a word, so that we can, we can do the best job that we can possibly do. That's it.
Counselor Mijota?
Yes, I just want to thank everyone who was a part of the inauguration. I met with a few constituents last week over some road repair. That request to the mayor was sent in the other day, and just want everyone to be safe for tonight and tomorrow with the high winds, and if anything happens, please call your appropriate source, whether it's National Grid or the police, and just be safe. Thank you.
Counselor Memhardt?
Thank you. I'd like to join all of my fellow councilors in thanking the DPW for a job well done managing this tricky weekend storm. We're going to get some rain tonight on top of the snow, so it's, you know, the mess isn't over, and it's always a challenge, especially the first snowstorm of the season. It's serious to, for a lot of constituents, we're concerned about getting plowed out, about damages done to grates and drains and curbs and roads and accessibility of their narrow streets with people left parking on the streets. So those things are all things that we, as councilors, hear about and work with the administration, with the DPW, to try and help address. And I'd just like to follow up on Catherine Ryan's encouragement to all of us to participate in and promote the comprehensive plan process, which right now is at this meeting in the box stage. I'm scheduled to attend a meeting in the box Thursday night at the Rocky Neck Cultural Center. I know there have been a number of others going on. There's sort of a swarm of meetings in the box, and I hope all of my fellow councilors and have a chance to both attend and participate, and also to encourage their constituents to do so, so that we can get some meaningful input for the community in this comprehensive plan process. Thank you.
Counselor Nolan?
I still want to echo for the DPW and Police and Fire for the work they did this past storm. It may not seem like a storm that was, that was tremendous, but it was a hard, long storm with a lot of hours. It dragged out, and people put in their time. And I just ask the citizens of the city to be patient when it comes to people clearing the streets because they're working people away from their families, trying to do the best they can in conditions that not salt can only control or their plows. It's time that can take its choice, and just be safe. And when we do have storm situations like tonight where there's going to be some flooding, the DPW is at ready, the water department is on. I believe they're starting earlier tonight or a little later tonight to be on call for storm drains to make sure that everybody's safe. But if you do have a question, certainly reach out to people or the city, and they'll take care of it. And thank you very much, and welcome to our two new councilors. Thank you.
Yes, again, also, let's remember that all this was done without a snow emergency being declared, so all that much more obstacles that needed to be worked around that they navigated quite well. Again, I would like to welcome the two new councilors and welcome everybody back because this is a brand-new session. Looking forward to it. We have plenty of opportunities to have an impact here, so let's all just do our best to work hard, and, you know, as was stated earlier, democracy is not a spectator sport. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.